Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
And the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How you doing, Eddie? You doing all right?
Oh, my blood.
Item or go-to items see approval of minutes. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved from the March 4th, 2019 council meeting. They will be approved. Reports from council committees. Electric committee met on March 11th, 2019. Mrs. Sinclair? Electric committee?
I was not present.
Oh.
Travis is gone. Who else is on there?
Anybody here from the electric committee?
Joe.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, okay.
The electric committee met on March 11th, 2019, and approved the B O P A recommendations to approve the March 2019 power supply cost adjustment factor and remove from the agenda discussion on mutual aid to the Navajo Nation. Water, sewer, refuge, recycling, and litter committee also met on March 11th.
And we decided that the city manager... Well, first off, it was an issue dealing with Big G's, the old Big G's restaurant. There was a high water usage there. And our mission that night was to find if the city manager did everything in his power and did it by the book. Well, we found in his favor, so that's what that is.
Okay, thank you. Municipal Properties Building Land Use and Economic Development Committee did not meet due to lack of agenda items. And earlier this evening, Parks and Recreation Committee did not meet due to lack of agenda items. Going on down to item G, introduction of new ordinances and resolution. But I did skip D. Let me go back to D. Citizen Communication. Anybody here that wants to speak on an issue not already on the agenda? Okay. I guess we'll go back to G. So, anyway, Resolution Number 018-19, a resolution authorizing and approving the Henry County Natural Hazard Migration Plan and declaring it an emergency.
I make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Council President Pro Tem. This is the Henry County Mitigation Plan. This was sent out in the weekly FYI. As we discussed last week, the Henry County EMA office would like for the city council to pass this under suspension this week due to the fact that, after talking with Tracy Bush afterwards, the current mitigation plan... The mitigation plans expire after five years. Our mitigation plan in Henry County has expired right now. We are not the last jurisdiction to have a resolution passed. There are three other jurisdictions in Henry County that still need to pass resolutions. But just to keep the ball rolling for them, they have requested that this be passed and adopted now so that they won't miss out on any opportunities for future grant funds if they apply for them.
Motion for suspension.
A second on suspension?
Second.
Roxanne, call the roll on suspension.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Ken.
Laurie.
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Okay, call the roll on the resolution.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that has been passed with suspension under the first reading. Resolution Number 019-19, a resolution authorizing contracts with the townships of Napoleon, Harrison, Freedom, the Village of Florida, and the Henry County South Joint Ambulance District for fire service and our emergency medical service commencing April 1, 2019, and declaring it an emergency. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion, Mr. City Manager?
Nothing unusual. This is our annual contract with the different jurisdictions. And I think that everything went well with the committee meeting, Safety and Human Resources Committee meeting on February 25th. And I don't know if there's anything else to add to it, but...
There was nobody had any... Everything seemed to be fine at the meeting, so I know of no problem.
So just requesting first read.
Okay. Roxanne, call the roll.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Jeff C. Yes.
Okay, next. Resolution Number 021-19, a resolution approving the provisions of certain collective bargaining agreement, Number 2016-MED-08-0802, between the City of Napoleon and Local 240, Napoleon Police Officers Association, I U P A, A F L-C I O, for the term commencing from December 1, 2019, through November 30, 2022, authorizing the city manager to execute the same and declaring it an emergency. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. We are requesting suspension on this as well. This is the... What you have... Some of you have in front of you that was discussed previously at a previous meeting, the terms and conditions of the new contract for the police union. We bargained this contract earlier than normal due to the fact that typically the police union contract is negotiated after the other unions, AFMI and the fire union. This one, we moved ahead because of a few items that were approved during the last budget cycle. In particular, the K-9 unit, SRO, and the sergeant position. Those positions needed contract language in order to get them in place because they were... A couple of them were... Well, all three of them were additions. The City of Napoleon once had a K-9 unit years ago when that was... The life of the dog expired. The K-9 unit never came back into play, so new language needed to be added for that. Also, we have the wages in there that were negotiated as well. And other than what we've already discussed and what's in front of you, I just didn't have much more to say about it other than we used the interest-based bargaining method to negotiate the contract. It worked out very well. I think both sides were motivated to get this completed as quickly as possible so that we can get these positions into play. We're still working with the schools on an agreement, so there will be an agreement forthcoming for the SRO between the city and the schools whereby the schools would be compensating the city for... In part, for the SRO position to be at the schools. We're still working on securing funds through donations for the K-9 unit as well. So, I mean, there's still some things to work out. But Chief, the biggest thing is the sergeant position because that's the position we want to fill first, too. So we want to have the promotion before you fill in the other positions because they're special assignments. So, but very positive. Everybody, you know, in collective bargaining, sometimes you leave and even though you may agree on something, you might disagree. But everybody was able to part ways and agree on this contract, and everybody's on good terms, and the negotiations went very well. So, any questions?
Suspension is because of the sergeant position?
Well, typically, when bargaining units negotiate contracts, after they ratify, usually it passes at the very next council meeting. This was, you know, a two-week lag. It's a little unusual, but it's a show of good faith and to get the contract into place.
But it's not going to start until December anyway, so we're not going to promote a sergeant until December 1st at the earliest. And also, we will not spend any money on K-9 until December 1st. Is that correct?
That is not correct. What we're planning on doing is if this is passed tonight, then we'll get in place MOUs, memorandum of understanding for each of these positions as they come about.
The SRO, though, is based on a contract with the Napoleon Air Schools?
It is. Yep.
And you're looking at that, Chief, to start the next August, start of the next school year?
If the contract's completed.
If the school agrees?
If the school agrees, yes. That's kind of the timeline, yes. So we're in that point of negotiating that MOU right now.
Anything else you need to add, Chief, on this?
I don't think so. The biggest thing for me is, you know, to get the sergeant going, given the state of our command structure and the timing of everything, we want the most candidates possible for that command position, and then moving from there. The timing of the schools, it'll be everything this year. So we'll be moving all the services with that piece in the next month, tomorrow maybe.
Yep.
And you got about five months until the start of the next school year, if that would develop, yeah.
Yes, yeah. We're under some tight time constraints. And there's legislation now in Ohio that I've got to get. If it's an SRO, they have to be certified as an SRO through a state that will hear from the appointment. So the training's going to be kind of critical to happen.
Any other questions? Okay. Is there a motion for suspension?
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay. You have a motion and a second. Roxanne, call the roll on the suspension.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Ken.
Laurie.
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Okay, now call the roll on the resolution.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Jeff C. Yes.
Okay. Going on to the next one. We'll have ordinance Number 022-19, basically an ordinance appointing a city finance director for the City of Napoleon, Ohio, and declaring that an emergency. Is there a motion? Is there a motion to appoint a finance director?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second now. Is that under Personnel Committee or is that under...
Should be me.
Should be me, yeah.
Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. You know, sometimes you read stuff in the paper and you realize you're not sure how that happened. You know, Saturday headline said that Mr. Siemens is joining us as the finance director. And I understand he resigned from the Holgate Schools to pursue an opportunity with the City of Napoleon, but he's a WMS... What is it?
MSW2.
MSW2, right, which is our new refuse drive for... Oh, hey, Brian.
Didn't say he was the finance director. He was saying the finance.
You could argue that in the headline. It was a little misleading.
The headline said, "You're not looking? The search is over."
Mr. Mayor, you have the wrong school system.
Holgate, right?
You said Napoleon.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant Holgate. I apologize. Thank you very much. So it was a nice bit of sleuthing by Brian because he is correct. We would like to... Personnel Committee met unanimously recommends that Napoleon City Council appoint Mr. Kent Siemens as the position of finance director with a start date of April 22, 2019. Specifics of his appointment are outlined in the ordinance Number 022-19. Thank you for your consideration and recommendation. So, and I have that signed as per the charter. I'll give that to Council President. Had to mess a little bit.
Yeah. Good you got me. We were talking, I'm like, what else? What do you have in mind for the water position?
There's that, there's a dispatcher, there's... Just because you can, it doesn't mean you...
Mr. Mayor, is there any need for suspension on this?
There is not.
Okay. So this is the first read and we will have...
We can actually go through three, four reads with this if we need to.
Before he starts on the 22nd?
Yeah.
Okay.
It might be nice, though, if we have more people at the next council meeting to do an emergency with suspension. That way, everybody can vote on it. And that way, it's done and it's not dragging out for him, so...
So, any other discussion?
We waited until tonight because tonight was the Holgate. Thank you very much. Holgate Local School Meeting, School Board Meeting. We wanted to make sure that he was able to tell all his people. I was confident they knew before tonight, but I wanted to absolutely wait until tonight and actually wanted to make sure council voted to approve before saying who it was. That's kind of why we were erring on the side of caution a little bit of saying our news, so that's what I had.
Okay, with that in mind, Roxanne, can you call the roll?
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Ken.
Laurie.
Yes.
Jeff C. Yes.
Okay, good. That's on the first read. Resolution Number 023-19, a resolution authorizing participation in the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, cooperative purchasing program, and declaring it an emergency. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. We are requesting suspension on this item as well. As Chad mentioned, last council meeting, ODOT was discovered that ODOT and their rules requires resolution for being a part of their contract. And this is for crack ceiling, the crack ceiling contract. We've partnered with them in years past, but this was something that was caught that we hadn't done before. And just trying to do things the right way and... That's why we're requesting suspension on this one because it was something that was discovered at too late of a time for us to be able to get it on in a timely manner.
Shouldn't we be doing the salt contract here, too, in the near future?
In the near future, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I was reading that and I'm thinking, it's time for salt, too.
That's another...
I thought, too.
But that's another ODOT...
Entity.
You know, one of those...
Driveline, yeah.
Yeah, or hurry up and get it done. But, you know, they tell us when they're ready, so...
They'll be very nice. They'll give us two days to get it done, today and tomorrow. So it's fine.
Okay, is there a motion for suspension?
Don't move.
I'll second.
Yeah. Okay. Can you call the roll on suspension?
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Jeff C. Yes.
Okay, now call the roll on the resolution.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie. Yes.
Jeff C. Yes.
Okay. Good. Now, Resolution Number 024-19, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds in excess of $25,000 for a project known as East and West Graceway Drive Street Improvement Project, which was not included in the 2019 master bid list. Resolution Number 078-18, an authorizing competitive bidding in regards thereto and declaring this an emergency. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Also requesting suspension on this item. And the reason is, we were going to add Graceway into the annual resurfacing projects. However, it just makes sense to bid that out separately because of the amount of curb and concrete work that's needed. So to bid it out as a separate project, it wasn't part of the master bid ordinance. And also, we're requesting suspension because we're getting to that part of the season where the contractor schedules are starting to fill up. So in order for us to be able to get the best pricing, the sooner we bid it, the better off we're going to be. So it was just kind of a timing issue, getting the project designed and everything. Separating it out just made sense to get it... Bid it out as a separate project and not as the typical annual resurfacing project.
Do we have some kind of design for them?
It's already designed.
Okay. Is it my favorite, Design Group?
I think it is. I think. I'm not sure about that, though.
Well, Joe, I'll express my opinion on this. I am very upset when I read the budget and I seen we have another change order. I think this is four or five for Park Street with them. I don't know what this is about, but how many change orders can you have on a project?
I guess, to answer, that's a tough one. You know, depending on the length of the project and what happens during the course of the project. I mean, they could be small change orders. I guess this is my opinion. When you look at a project, think of it as, you know, you have a 10% contingency. And as long as you're within budget and within that 10% contingency is kind of how I feel as a success of a project. So it depends on what the change order is and what the reasoning is. But I do totally understand your concerns. Totally understand it.
I thought I'd better check.
That's good. I'm glad you're asking the questions, too. That's because it's important and...
Now, let me ask you this. Is Park Street going to go yet this year? We're in a season where we should already have this thing bid.
You are correct. The one thing that we are waiting on right now is word back from Miami Valley Planning Organization on the award of certain grant funds.
Okay.
So I know exactly what you mean. The sooner we bid it, the better off we're going to be because of the pricing.
Right.
But also, to that end, you know, we're also looking at, you know, if we get grant funds, it's kind of offsets the...
Sure.
In our favor. So...
Well, I don't want to run into the cold weather again like we did downtown.
Right. Where you get into a Park Street project.
Sure.
And then you wind up having an issue like Haley.
Sure.
You know, Haley, when they put the final asphalt on top with the...
Sure.
You know, we had some settling issues in the aftermath and...
You mean when they were paving in the snow? You mean that day?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because the snow was flying that day they were paving.
It was very, very light in the year. Yeah, very light in the year.
The East and West Graceway projects... I'm sorry, Councilman.
You know, I'm good. I just had to express my opinion because I've been biting at the bullet all weekend about this.
That project's going to be... Not going to interfere at all with the Henry County Fair. I know it's not directly adjacent to it, but it's in the neighborhood. So as long as that can get done either before or after, that we not mess with that.
All right.
There's enough traffic going on down there. Last thing we need is...
During that week, having...
Yeah. Having more construction stuff and, yeah.
Some issue, though.
So I think it's... I'm looking at the calendar. I'm guessing the fair's going to start on August 9th and finish up on the 15th or the 8th to the 15th.
It's a Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday. So 8th to the 15th, so... We should keep that kind of in mind?
Definitely.
Okay.
One caveat to that is the more restrictions you put in a bid document...
I understand.
The higher the cost goes.
Right.
So I'm sensitive to that. It's, you know... Cost over convenience is kind of what we weigh sometimes and...
As busy as construction organizations are right now, you'd think they could find someplace else to be for about 10 days, two weeks, without starting on that project, I would hope. So...
Depends on the contractor, too.
Okay. Did we have a motion for suspension yet? Is there a motion for suspension?
Don't move.
Pardon? Okay.
Yes.
Jeff C. Okay. Let me back up just one minute. Is there any other discussion on this that I may have missed? Okay. Roxanne, call the roll on suspension.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Okay, call the roll on the resolution.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Laurie. Yes.
Okay, moving on to second reading of ordinances and resolutions. There are none tonight. We have one-third reading, and that is Resolution Number 012-19, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds over $25,000 for the purpose of implementation of a GIS system and to sole source and implement, implementation to SanTech Consulting Services and Company and declaring that this an emergency. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. City Manager.
I have nothing new to report on this. This has been an ongoing project. This is phase two of four. And the, phase one and two were the most expensive or are the most expensive portions of it. And phases three and four are, are, um, less than this. So that's all I have to say unless anybody has any questions.
Okay, Roxanne, call the roll.
Dan?
Yes.
Jeff M?
Yes.
Ken? Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to Good of the City. Item number one, discussion action approval of power supply cost adjustment factor for the March 2019 as PSCA three-month average factor 0.01905, JV2 0.027792, and JVS 0.027792. Since there's nobody from the Electric Committee here, Electric Department Chairman, have any comment on this res, on this issue?
It was down just a little bit from last month, so I'm happy it's down instead of going up.
Okay.
Love that.
Good. We need, we need a...
Motion.
Need a motion on this?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roxanne, call the roll.
Dan?
Yes.
Jeff M?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Okay. Discussion of action, review of PC 19-01 preliminary plot subdivision, Shank Pla...
Platt.
Platt. I said plot, Platt, excuse me.
We know what you meant. That's right. You said migration, not mitigation before.
Okay. And the newspaper is quoting, making all my quotes in here now. No. Mr. City Manager.
Uh, thank you. The Planning Commission, Matt.
Do you want me to do this?
Pardon?
Do you want me to do this?
Oh, yeah, yeah. What, yeah, cause you're on the Planning Commission.
Right. So if you'll take a drive with me in your mind, we'll go on Oakwood Drive and we'll go north. We'll go by River City Boulevard, over the overpass and down the other hill. And then you come to a corner which is American and Oakwood. On the northeast corner is the old Light Building. That is now owned by Mr. Shank. Mr. Shank would like to extend his property out along Oakwood, basically halfway back between Freedom Drive and American. Have so wide in there that he can, um, that he can put up, put up a building and start some ministry there. It's, that resides inside the city of Napoleon. In order to do that, he had to buy some of Mr. Williams' ground. And Mr. Williams owns N R and G. Those two came to an agreement, and the Planning Commission voted unanimously for this to allow Mr. Shank to, uh, to buy the ground and also to expand his operation. So that was fairly simple to do on our, on our part. And then, as you can see, there it is. There it is. Basically, if you take that green to the north, about in there, some places where that line stops. And Mr. Shank has been able to build his organization in, in that ground right there. So that was what Planning Commission 19-01 was a preliminary plat for that piece right there.
We need a motion?
Yes.
Does that look good to you, Ed?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Roxanne, call the roll.
Dan?
Yes.
Jeff M?
Yes.
Ken? Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Okay. Now, discussion action, review of PC 1903 preliminary plat of subdivision of the North Point Plat.
We need 1902 first, if you could please, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I crashed that off, sorry. 19, let me back up. PC 1902, conditional use permit for recycling center at 450 Freedom Drive, N R and G Equipment LLC. And I'm assuming this is still you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. So Mr. Williams has already had a conditional use permit for his recycling center, which is on the north side of Freedom Drive. This, we changed it a little bit. Instead of it being 100 feet, 100 foot setback, it's a 50 foot setback. Instead of the, uh, the mound has to be five feet tall and flat on the top. And he's gonna plant arbor, arborvitums at every four feet, basically put a, a green perimeter around his, his recycling operation. That should keep the debris from going into, into people's fields and down the way a little bit. There's gonna be a lot of trees in there, but he understands that. So that was majority of what that was. For him to continue his operation in the, in his ground, with just some changing of the border restrictions, Mr. Shank had, had no, obviously no, no problems with that. The issues were raised by Mrs. Hesby from across the way at Faber Trofei. Once she understood what was going on, she seemed satisfied with the, with the answers that she got from Mr. Shank and also Mr. Williams. And Mr. Williams is the one that owns the N R and G Recycling.
I've got, uh, an addition to that. Did you tell them that the, the deadline?
The deadline to put the trees up, thank you very much. The deadline to put the trees up is November the 30th, I think, of this year. The thought process there is you get your mounds up and then you get the trees on this year and get them growing. We don't want this to be, I'll do it eventually. It's more of a, let's get it done this year. So... And actually, Mr. Williams said, you know, hopefully get them up sooner than that. We gave him the end of the year. We, he probably won't get them up in springtime. And summer's a hard time to get trees growing. So we gave him the fall planting time to also to, to keep working on his, his trees.
I just wanted to state, too, that he was not compliant with his last conditional use permit. So we had some, some exchange in correspondence and letters, but he, he understood because I'm sure others here have, may have received complaints or at least knew about the previous conditional use permit. So Don, uh, Don understood. He understands and he, he knows what he needs to do. And if he doesn't comply, that's, and that's why the date was set because of the previous conditional use permit was not met. But since the modifications have been made, we're, we're, we're back on a, on a different track of compliance with, with hard deadlines. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. And motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roxanne, call the roll.
Dan?
Yes.
Jeff M?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Now, I think I'm going on to number four, correct?
Yes, please.
Okay. Discussion action, review of PC 19-03 preliminary plat of the subdivision of North Point Plat Number Five. Is that still you, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, it is. If you look where the cursor is right now on the, on the map, and you went to the right, to basically to the edge right there, and a little bit more to the right and then straight up, that is what Paul Martin and Sons, or is this owned by...
Doug, Doug Martin and Anthony Martin.
Anthony Martin, yeah.
So this, this parcel is, is kinda boot-shaped.
Yeah, exactly what it is. And then there's like a, there's that piece that goes straight up there. So...
And then there's another piece that goes...
On that side. So we'll talk about the boot-shaped one first. And this is where Mr. Heffel comes involved because they wanted to include some of Mr. Heffel's ground and basically go straight up right up there, basically to connect that. And apparently, Mr. Heffel is, is okay with it since he didn't say anything at the Planning Commission meeting and he's sitting here. So I'm guessing he says it's okay. Okay. They're currently sitting on about acre and a half, uh, on the same mile as Gerald. And this is now basically gonna expand their footprint to be 11-plus acres. They're farm machinery rental operation. So if you need a big tractor, special implement, you go and see Paul Martin. And actually, you see his sons now, Doug and Anthony. I think Doug is the one that does most of the day-to-day business. And so they're gonna expand from that location to this one. They'll have their, their frontage along 24 to do some, obviously much more visible than where they are right now, expand their operation. And this is okay with the Planning Commission also. The only caveat was currently, the master plan has kind of a through street, basically the end of Freedom Drive up to American at some point. That's a paper street. There's no utilities there. That's a, it's a, it's a dream, right?
Yeah, it's not even, there's no plat either.
There's no plat, there's no plan. It's just a, it's a line, someone joined a map that said, wouldn't this be cool if? And you still can have that road. It just will not probably be along this way. That road would be there for future development. Well, we can eat future development or we can have people develop it right now. And the idea was, and the Planning Commission felt that development now is better than potential future development down the road. So they're okay with that. Mr. Heffel still has a, the access to Freedom Drive, basically above the word there Gilson Machine on our map. And then his piece kinda gives in that, in that general vicinity there, there still. So everyone, Planning Commission was, was fine with it. It met with unanimous approval for Planning Commission 19-03.
Any more comments?
Nope.
Anything, sir?
No, I have no comment on that there. It looks fine.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roxanne, call the roll.
Dan?
Yes.
Jeff M?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Okay. Item number five, discussion action, approval of specifications for the Perry Street Bridge Waterline Support Replacement and Spot Repair Project Phase Two. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. This is phase two of two of the waterline, Perry Street Waterline Hangar project. Nothing much to it. This is approving specification so we can go out to bid.
This was in the budget, right?
Correct. Yes, it was in the budget.
This is the other side of the river, right? They did one side of the bridge.
They did one side of the bridge, now it's the other side. Yep.
And motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roxanne, call the roll.
Dan?
Yes.
Jeff M?
Yes.
Ken? Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Okay, item number six, discussion action, approval of specifications for cleaning of the lime sludge lagoons at the water treatment plant. Joel?
Thank you. Another item that was also budgeted, but we, we have cleaning to do in the lime sludge lagoons. We can still land apply this. It's, it's still lime sludge. So this'll be the last time we clean these out while they're still lime sludge. If we fill them again, there'll be ACH water plant solids residuals, which basically means that we're, we may actually be able to land apply them, but nobody's really gonna want it because there's no value to it. So...
Comments? Questions? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Lori. Roxanne, call the roll.
Dan?
Yes.
Jeff M?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, item number seven, discussion action, award of the 2019 Miscellaneous Streets Improvement Projects. Joel, again?
Thank you. The annual resurfacing projects, formerly known as the Miscellaneous Streets Projects, we did get four bids back. And the lowest bid was Helms &amp; Sons Excavating at $233,850.20. The engineer's estimate was $275,000. This will cover Ken James Court, Bonaparte Drive, Beckley Drive, and Haley Avenue from West Riverview to West Washington Street. There is a chance that, you know, we could, we could add some other streets possibly, but we'd have to wait and see how these, how these streets go. Plus, you know, wait, wait for the, you know, new finance director, too, to get, make sure he's comfortable with where we're at as well. So, but that's, that's the, the base that we're looking to cover. And then the other portion of that was, was going to be for the Grace Way project.
Who's Helms &amp; Sons?
They're on a freeway.
Yeah. Yep.
I didn't know if they did paving. I thought they were just an excavation for it. Didn't, didn't they do a project for us some years ago?
Uh, not, I...
I believe so. I believe you're correct.
Yeah.
Was that before Chad started? Cause I'm not sure if Chad did.
Come on, Joe.
Either way, it's been a long time since they've done, done a project here, so...
And I'm assuming that the engineers done all this research to make sure they're all the proper stuff that Helms &amp; Sons is?
Yep.
Did they buy the paving company down in Ottawa?
Who would that be?
Well, Arnie Rosebrook started it. I can't think of the name of it right now.
I, I would say they're gonna have to get their, their asphalt from Gherkins. So, pretty good bet. Yeah. It's either gonna be Custard or Archibald. They're gonna have to get it. Cause you talk Ottawa and that's, the asphalt temperature's gonna be really dropping unless they got heated boxes. Yeah. I've looked at that price and I'm thinking, I don't know. Is that the best for us?
Well, it was competitively...
We'll find out.
It was competitively bid, so...
That's right.
Followed the normal procurement rules.
Yep.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roxanne, call the roll.
Dan?
Yes.
Jeff M?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Item number eight, discussion action, award of a new 2019 or newer 1FB 48 bolt EV 2LT for the Electric Department. Mr. Electric Department. Danny.
As you'll notice, it does have heated seats. I did not order those, but to get a package where you got a few other necessities, that heated seat came with it. So I couldn't be ducked it because it's like in a package deal. Because I first went to them and I said, I don't want it completely stripped down where I've got a bucket to sit on. But I want something that does not weigh half a dollar. And that's what they came up with at Snyder's so that we would not be spending frivolously on things we don't need. But the heated seats caught my eye when I got back. And I go, are you sure you want, uh, put heated seats on there? Is that gonna cost me extra? And they said, well, because of the package, we, the low-end package even has a heated seat. So we can't like...
Comes in as part of the standard.
More money.
Danny, is this car gonna sit inside or outside most nights?
Inside.
Inside?
Yeah. There's a space out there that we gave up to an employee that was, that had a physical condition.
Sure.
And we're gonna move that truck or reclaim that space and plug it in right outside my door.
Okay.
Any other?
Uh, yeah, I don't know how much detail you want. I know there were some comments on, I've, I've been sitting through a lot of the, you know, presentations from AMP and, and other organizations. And there's a lot of research on this. But the maintenance of an electric vehicle, an all-electric vehicle is, is virtually zero, other than brakes and tires. You know, occasionally the, the battery needs to be swapped out. But I did get a phone call from a Rod Parcel, and he said it was okay to bring him up. He has actually a, a plug-in hybrid electric. Wanted to give some feedback. And he said that, you know, he pla, he drives home. He drives however many miles a day and comes home and plugs it in every night. And he said that he has virtually seen no impact to his, to his electric bill. And just had a lot of positive things to say about it. And there's no maintenance on the electric. He's had it for two years. So on the, on the electric part of the engine, he hasn't had any, any maintenance needs. You know, it is, since it is a hybrid, it still has the gasoline component. I believe it's, uh, eight gallons of, of, uh, gasoline engine. So it's a smaller engine. He's got a volt, not a, not a bolt. But he, he had a lot of things to say about how the, um, how it's a, you know, low, low maintenance, low cost to run vehicle. So, um, that's, I'm happy to answer any questions. I've got a, the Department of Energy has a really good, what they call a, it's a cost calculator. And you can plug in the make and model and year of any kind of vehicle and compare it, you know, the maintenance of it, the maintenance estimates of what, what it would take to, and, and actually, they do it by state also. Because some of them, the climate's different, temperatures are different. Lastly, the, it, it also on that same website shows the types of emission outputs because, because, and we're, and we're different because we're, 30% of our electric comes from renewables. So, um, so we're different. But the state of Ohio is, is heavy into coal. So that's where a lot of the generation comes from, power generation comes from. But it's not, you know, completely different from, from a lot of other states. But it's, it's a little heavy on the coal side. So in terms of, you know, emissions generated from an electric vehicle, it still does use electricity. And electricity still is created from some fossil fuel burning. But the impact is marginal in comparison to the amount of burning from, from gasoline engines. So that's also information on the website. I didn't want to get into too much detail on that unless, unless anybody has questions.
Okay. We're all curious, Danny, about how this thing operates for you. All of us are. You know what I mean? We just, we, we all, seen them, never driven one, never had somebody that I know uses one a lot. So we're all curious to see how this works for you, so...
I, I've been in it before. I think it's, it's a great idea to promote electric cars because as we move forward here in the future, you're gonna see the coal plants getting closed up. You're gonna see everything being renewable with maybe a few natural gas base plants to keep the bottom line going. So we have something that's running 24/7 if needed, as opposed to something when the sun's shining or the wind's blowing. But in the end, we need to load to maintain our electric department. We need to sell kilowatt hours. And if we have a lot of electric cars, we'll sell more kilowatt hours, which makes our utility stay in business. So if we can promote them on the bottom end here, learn more about them, make people feel more comfortable with them, it can be a catalyst to move forward.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roxanne, call the roll.
Dan?
Yes.
Jeff M?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Okay, discussion, action, item number nine, applying for Walmart Community Action Grant, no match for the fire department.
You know, I should know this, but I'm blanking out right now on what Clayton's gonna apply for, but he's.
I love the no match part.
Yeah, right. Sorry about that. I, I believe, I believe it was for equipment, you know, just your standard equipment like turnout gear and, and things like that, so. He's applying for a grant. It's through Walmart. It's kind of a new source and actually they do both fire departments and police departments, so rather than compete, chief and chief, we're gonna alternate on, on turning in applications on a, on a year-to-year basis. Chief, do you have anything to add to? Good.
So we need a motion, right?
Yep.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, Lori and Jeff. Jeff M. So we'll go on now and Roxanne, call the roll on that.
Dan?
Yes.
Jeff M?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Okay, item number 10, discussion, action, application for placement of farmland in an agricultural district located in the city of Napoleon. Applied for by MYR Properties LLC and to direct the law director to draft legislation approving the ag district.
Uh, Chris, do you wanna talk about this?
This is a new application that's been filed by the county and so then we're the next step in, in the process of approving it.
And Chris, was there, was there an influx of them regionally?
Has to do with the.
The Lake Erie Bill of Rights passing?
Yeah. They had over 300 ag districts filed.
Just in Henry County?
Henry County, and this is the only one that's in city limits, so.
This was thanks to the voters in Toledo?
Yes.
Okay. We need a motion, I suppose.
Where approximately is this?
This is on American Road.
Okay.
Do you have any comment?
No, I need a motion to direct us to draft it.
Okay.
What she said.
So we need a motion.
So moved.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Roxanne, call the roll, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Jeff M?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Okay, then I, I think the next item sort of won't we normally do here, I think. Discussion, action, set a public hearing for ag district for Monday, April 1, 2019 at 6:45 PM. We don't, we've done those in the past, haven't we?
Yeah, that's the normal process for that.
Yes, that's why I told you. Okay, so we need to, do we need to do anything with that? Or that's already?
You don't need a motion, I think.
Yeah, for the.
You need a motion to set the meeting? Okay.
You motion, you need to set it.
We prefer both the motion and the petition because of the public hearing.
Good.
Thank you. See, you can't hide forever, but.
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to set this public hearing for two weeks from tonight, April 1, 2019, 6:45 PM, prior to the regular council meeting.
People fool's joke.
Roxanne, please call the roll.
Dan?
Yes.
Jeff M?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Okay, number 12, discussion, action, appointment to the housing council.
Nope. We're done.
Joel?
Pardon? I'm sorry.
Council appoints those two people.
Council appoints these people, so.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, the.
Housing council.
Here's the ordinance from, ordinance 120-00. Housing council, two members appointed by the mayor and two members appointed by motion of city council, so.
Okay, and who are our two members?
The two are Lori and Ted Roers.
And didn't I see somewhere, somebody said something that Ted had trouble coming to meetings at that time of year?
Yes.
Turn. Lori, are you willing to continue in that position?
Ms. Clerk, is there, I don't know if anybody had, had spoken, I don't know if Joe talked to Ted Roers or not, or Travis, cause I know Travis knows him. If, if he has trouble showing up, could it be that two members of council can be appointed to the housing council? So if that's the case, if there's another council person that would like to be on the housing council. They don't meet very often. They, I think there's just this one meeting coming up for TIRC and then intermittently, at best, after that.
Can we still appoint Mr. Roers?
Yep.
We can still do that? Okay, when, Lori, you're okay with, now we need a motion to do that, I'm assuming?
It's the best way to do it, I support it done traditionally.
Yeah, I think it actually says motion.
So let's do a motion to appoint.
It says motion by council.
Councilwoman Sinclair and Ted Roers to the housing council.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roxanne, call the roll, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Jeff M?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then, discussion, action on tax incentive review council.
I just wanted to give everybody, I think you saw in the weekly FYI about what happened at the TIRC meeting. The TIRC recommended to terminate the agreement between the city of Napoleon and Napoleon One. And the reason was, at the time, we didn't have the most updated information on the employment numbers and payroll numbers. Since that meeting, we've been in contact with Ray Cox, who was the owner of the property. And he gave a, a very nice history of the project. Basically, this started as a Terry Williams project. And, and she pushed this, pushed it this forward because she was working as the district representative of Rite Aid. That's, maybe I got that right. And she really wanted a Rite Aid in Napoleon. And, and the only way to really make the numbers work for this project was to have the, the CRA agreement in place. And, and I can go into detail on why that is, but it has to do with preferred contractors. And the only preferred contractors that they could get approved for Rite Aid were from, like Northern Michigan was the closest one or something like that. And, but, but essentially, to make this, to make this a viable project for him, make the numbers work, and he really needed to have a CRA agreement in place. Terry Williams pushed it through and Terry Williams was able to provide him with the employment numbers and, and everything else on a timely basis. After, I don't know if she retired or if she passed away or whatever it was, but when, when she wasn't around anymore, he wasn't able, it's, it's been difficult to say for him to get the information he needs from them, so. That was his reasoning. I just wanted to bring that up so that, this is gonna come up in the, at the housing council meeting, before the April 1 council meeting. So we'll revisit this again. Just wanted to give you a little background information and let you know what, what has happened since then and we have all the, and we have the updated forms too from, from Mr. Cox, so we just got those last night.
So nothing we need to do with this?
Nothing, nothing needs to be done right now.
And item 14, discussion of action, appointment to the county health board, is that the council or?
The council.
Yep.
Or city manager, that's not me.
Well, appointed, approved by council.
Right.
Approved by the city.
Your recommendation?
Recommendation is Joel Miller.
And that's a reappointment?
He currently serves on the health board and.
Okay, can I have a motion for such?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to reappoint Joel Miller to the county health board. Roxanne, call the roll.
Dan?
Yes.
Jeff M?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Okay.
City manager, can you go back to that list you just showed?
Oh, yep, yep, yep.
Is Dr. Lindsay done as of 15 days ago?
It appears so.
Okay.
Who is Dr. Lindsay?
Of course, at the hospital. No longer.
Not anymore.
Right, we did at the time, yeah.
So somebody's gonna have to appoint him? Or appoint a doctor?
If that's, well, I think his, his term expires, we're gonna, we're gonna find somebody else for his slot.
Is that supposed to be a physician?
I don't know if it has to be or not.
City manager.
Yeah, I'll look into it. If we need to make an appointment, we can do it at the next meeting. Let me check with Dr. Lindsay to see if he's still interested in serving on there.
Yeah, he's not, he doesn't live in this area anymore?
Oh, he, oh, okay. Ah, okay, okay.
I would say no.
Yeah, and that's a no. So we'll, we'll get somebody, we'll get somebody on for April 1st.
But there are several good doctors that could take a spot.
Yep.
Okay, we will go around the table, starting with the city manager.
Right. I just have a couple of things. The first item is the AMP schedule of events. AMP sent out a letter, I believe Travis got this as well. The OMEA Legislative Day at the Ohio State House is May 29th in Columbus. The AMP OMEA Annual Conference, September 23rd through the 25th. And then the legislative rally in Washington for APPA in 2020 is February 24th through the 26th. Just wanna make sure everybody has those dates on their calendars, so we remember. I think Travis is, because he's the OMEA board member, was planning on going on May 29th. Mayor, I wasn't sure if you were planning on going or.
I probably could if we need to.
Councilwoman Sinclair or, or councilman by LaRookie, being electric committee members, may wanna think about going as well, so. So that's that. And then, lastly, I'm gonna request that council direct the law director to draft legislation for a WPCLF application. And this would be for the Van Heining Pump Station Replacement Project. So that we can get it on the council agenda for April 1st.
Okay, is there a motion to, to do such?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to do what the city manager just requested? You got that, Roxanne? Yes? Okay. Would you call the roll, please?
Dan?
Yes.
Jeff M?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Hayes?
I have nothing.
Councilman Meyer?
Nothing as well.
Mr. Mayor?
A shortlist, thank you very much. As you come into town on 108 from Waseon, the Napoleon sign, city limit sign that has the Home of Sam Meese and the Water Polo Team sign is gone. It looks like when they were trimming those bushes back, that sign got knocked down. And I know we, somebody picked it up because it laid there in the ditch kind of by itself for a day and a half and on a Monday or Tuesday it was gone, so. It's probably on Mr. Rathke's list to put it back up, but it's been missed, how about that? Chief Matt, congratulations on your award from the, from the Legion, so thank you for letting me come along, I appreciate that, so that was, that's good. It was the 100th anniversary, 100th birthday of the American Legion on Friday, the 15th. 100 years ago that day, some officers met and tried to figure out how to best take care of veterans returning from the Great War, as was known at that time, so that's, when you look around the city of Napoleon, you look around, different municipalities, it seems like Legions are at the heart and do lots of good stuff. You know, ours, they do those chicken and rib dinners and they also do a lot of stuff, 4th of July time, Memorial Day, home football games and all kinds of stuff. They're always, always out there, big parts of the community, so we appreciate and congratulate them on 100th anniversary, 100th birthday for that organization. Special thank you to the Personnel Committee to include Laney, she helped us, guided us through the whole, the whole process. Roxanne, some extra meetings for you, so thank you very much for you, for your time. Lori, I appreciate it and also appreciate Joe and Travis. Appreciate Travis pinching it for Joe when he was out, so. Do we need a piece of legislation? I don't think we do. We need to have the Personnel Committee dissolved or dismissed as it's currently finished with its work. Is that a legislation? Is that just a motion? Is that?
Actually, Jason, you should keep the Personnel Committee together and then if you decide to use the committee for a different purpose, you can reappoint folks as you see fit.
You don't want us to take it apart now?
No. It's a matter of council anyway, so it should stay.
Okay. That's why you're here, Tammy, thank you. So I had, thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. Only thing I wanted to share is we do have, the county health department's got a meeting and a meal coming up here a week from Thursday, the 28th. I believe our city manager is attending that meeting.
Yep.
And we will have a representative from the Safety and Human Resources Committee attending. And that will be Councilman Jeff C. over here will be attending and he probably will be bringing his fair and lovely wife to provide her a meal, so. Is that okay, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
And I have nothing else.
I have nothing.
Nothing for me?
Nothing for me.
Wow, that was.
We do have finance and budget next week, right, for first quarter budget judgment?
Who's on finance and budget here?
Joe's at the chair.
Yeah.
Ken?
Me. No, somebody else?
I, I think. Oh, yes.
Oh. Okay, so there will be a finance and budget meeting. I do not have anything for Safety and Human Resources for next week. Sorry, I'm going backwards.
Yep, no, it's good.
No Safety and Human Resources. Okay, and I didn't hear any requests for executive session?
Why? Why would you say that? Why? We're this close.
So, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, you gotta pay bills.
Yep.
Oh, 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 oh.
It's like telling the teacher, you've got to give us your quiz today.
Okay, any, any sense on the payment of bills? Jeff?
Nope, I got my question answered.
Okay, is, now is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Roxanne, call the roll.
Dan?
Yes.
Jeff M?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff C.
Yes.
We are adjourned and I'm, I am anticipating.